Good, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's November 21st, 2022. This is the GBOS work session regarding the Housing and Economic Stability Power. The Government Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Government Board of Supervisors operates under the Gerwood Public Meetings Standards of Conduct. I'll call the meeting to order at 5:01. I'm Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor. In the room also here on the left.
Mike Edgerton, Co-Chair, Land Use Supervisor.
Guy Weyd, Park Department.
And online, Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you, Amanda. And Jennifer indicated she was not attending this meeting. So we will see if we have any other guests. I don't see any others online. Any disclosures tonight? Seeing none, I will move on for the agenda revisions and approval and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any oppositions? Okay, agenda's approved. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under this discussion. Please respect everyone's opinions. GBOS committees, the Trails Committee, Land Use Committee, and Public Safety Advisory Committee will hold elections at their January 2023 meetings. GBOS seats D and E are up for election in the spring municipal election. The agenda tonight, number one, discussion of additional power for GBOS to collect property tax for housing and economic stability within the Gerwood Valley Service Area. Start with that one unless I should read the whole thing.
Yeah, sorry, I was going to resend it.
Technical process to add to municipal ballot purpose and method will all be under number one.
Okay, so I'll take this. So we have, you see, the service area has five or maybe six service area powers at the moment. We have roads and park, well, roads and drainage, we have parks and rec, we have fire, we have police, we have cemetery, and there's also something in code that says we have solid waste services as well, although I really don't understand if we do or don't. But both the cemetery and police are relatively new powers that were added in 2015, 2016, respectively. So there's a mechanism in code to add power and add services, and the services still join this, you can go through the code in much more detail, but services are kind of, quote, "special services" which apply to some geographic area. And the argument, the argument basically that underpins this is while housing is an issue across Anchorage, really across the states, across probably the world, there are particular issues in Gerwood which do not apply elsewhere in the municipality. So there are a set of additional and special services one could provide on top of whatever the municipality is doing, which at the moment is not very extensive. They do not have a housing department or anything similar, although I know that is a topic which was discussed at the Assembly Retreat. So they may have more extensive housing policies over the next year or two. And, you know, the reason we primarily need that is we are not, you know, just adding more houses doesn't necessarily mean it solves our problems of, you know, housing for people who live and work in this community, because obviously we have the largest part of the demand is from people who want second homes or vacation homes or vacation rentals, which is fine. I mean, that's an important part of the economy. It's just that tends to be the need which is filled rather than housing for locals. And then obviously, we have the issue of affordability of prices. So one thing that's completely missing, and it's been very clear from Holton Hills, is although there are lots of ideas going from a general idea to something that can actually implement, be implemented, is a lot of work and typically, you know, technical work from specialists. And we don't, you know, none of us as volunteers have that. There's no one in the Muni that has that. So one of the things we desperately need is to have kind of a implementable detailed plan of what, you know, what ideally this community needs over the next five to 10 years. So from the last page, so what I'm thinking is, it's obviously up to the board, but one way we could do this is if it passes, treat it as mostly putting infrastructure into what would have been be of infrastructure is kind of planning, technical help, technical advice, maybe even legal advice in year one, and set up the things that we needed after that. And then the idea is that subsequently, the sort of services we would have are not going to be, you know, building housing or subsidizing housing. That would be from other grant programs. What we would be paying for is probably some percentage of staffing or technical services around that. So it's the term that's actually used here is, is it the power to provide services in support of policies that promote local housing and economic stability. We as GBOS do not implement policies directly. The Assembly does that, or rather, you know, creates the policies, and then they're implemented by a combination of administration and potentially other subcontractors. So this power would be the support of those policies to promote local housing and economic stability. And my understanding is also that if we have this power, then things like holding money, holding funds are an option, as we do with trails and other things, as we do with, you know, roads as well, and also potentially at least taking management responsibility for land is an option, because we do that for parks within the service area power. And it appears that we can do that for, we could do that for land dedicated housing or economic activities as well. So it kind of hits a lot of the things that we've been missing and have been obvious that missing as we've talked through Holton Hills. No way to deal with money, no way to receive money, no way to deal with land, you know, no way to actually sort of do the detailed work that had to be done, answer the legal questions, do the technical work, et cetera. So that's what this potentially would fill. I'm not going to go through the document itself in the hope that we get, we do get Bill turning up, although I can do. I will say something about the process. So the process is, this ordinance would have to, has to go to the Assembly. If the Assembly passed the ordinance, then it becomes a question on the April ballot. And then these voters in Gerwood alone would then vote on this. And if they vote yes, it would be approved. If they don't vote, we don't have it. It's pretty, that bit's pretty simple. We get a majority or not. And that will again only be the voters of Gerwood. It's not voters of Anchorage. It's just simply the same as we had with the cemetery and police. It's only the voters here in this community. And as I said on the last page, I put an estimate of what, you know, year one would be. They probably wouldn't be that much different in subsequent years, but it would equate to about $50 for a year, $50 a year for an average residential owner of taxes, those services. I do see Bill here. Can I, do you mind if I ask Bill to say some words?
Go ahead.
Bill, could you just talk through the, would it be possible to talk through the language in the amendment itself if you're able to? I know you may be on the road.
Yeah, I apologize. I am on the road. Let me see if I can pull over and do that in a sensible way. I just joined about 30 seconds ago, so I also missed the preliminary mic and don't want to duplicate. But if you have the language of the draft that you are able to share on the screen, I can pull it up and talk through it. It ends up being actually a pretty simple exercise and hopefully self-explanatory, because a lot of what we're going to be talking about in that ordinance language that.
We just lost audio.
We don't hear you.
Oh, there's a little Bluetooth connection there. So Mike, or anyone, if there is language on the screen that you want me to talk through, or do you want me to try to pull up the draft that's been circulated over email?
I think Kyle is pulling up the language on the screen.
Excellent.
It was in the packet.
Sorry, I'll get it to you.
So what I covered so far is just a brief outline of the sort of scope of the power. You know, it's in support of policies. It's not, it's not a power to actually implement policies directly. Everything still has to go through the Assembly process, but it would be a power to support and spend money in that. And also, we would then have a, you know, there would be a component within effectively the administration, which could be the service area, which has responsible Ateefas supporting housing within Gerwood, housing policies within Gerwood. So that puts us kind of a little bit more into the mix of discussion when things do happen, which again, we haven't seen so much with Holton Hills.
Yeah, I think, I think that's exactly right. I saw the language appear on the screen momentarily, and then it returned me to the agenda.
Let's see. Sorry, there it is.
There it is. So I'll give you the color commentary as we just slide down this, and I'll just do a kind of a top level here. For those who've been playing along and looking at Assembly ordinances, this should be relatively familiar. This has not yet, to my knowledge, been introduced, so it hasn't yet been slated to appear on an Assembly agenda, but assuming that there's a desire to go forward from an Assembly member, you'll see this get introduced and likely be set for a public hearing two weeks later. The whereas clauses are not law, but they're just outlining the story. And so the story that was anticipated that might show up is that here in the Unified Municipality of Anchorage, we have some area-wide functions, but we have also a lot of powers that are exercised through smaller polygons, limited geographies, that collect taxes for those limited special purposes. And so this would be a proposal to take the Gerwood Valley Service Area, which already exists and which already has a suite of enumerated powers, to add this new local economic and housing stability power. And we'll have to say more about that in a moment, assuming that it gets a blessing from the Gerwood Valley Service Area. We've mentioned that in the whereas clauses. This actually borrows pretty extensively from the ordinance model that added cemetery power to the Gerwood Valley Service Area. So this is almost sort of a cut and paste exercise from that. And then we did want to make clear that a lot of times when the question is going to voters, it's not just a question about what kind of power can be exercised, but whether new taxes can be raised. And it is my understanding that the current conversation has been Gerwood may already tax up to six mils. It is not yet all the way up to six mils. There's still some capacity. So this would be a question about adding an additional power, but not adding additional potential taxing authority. You could fill some of that unfilled space lower than the six mil cap, that the six mil cap would be remaining in place. So with that as the preamble in the various whereas, section one is just, we're going to send this proposition to voters. And I'll say, there's some, maybe a little bit of science in this, but there's also a lot of art. So I encourage everyone actually just to take a look at this center block of text and try it on for size, because this would be the language that goes to voters, and it should hopefully be unbiased and sufficiently exhausted so people can just get a good handle on what's being proposed here. But if in your experience, you guys are a lot closer to it, and you guys would be the ones who are actually voting on it, this paragraph causes questions to be raised and unanswered, that would be good to surface, because you'd hopefully get ahead of that. But as currently, we've got, this is a proposition to add to the Gerwood Valley Service Area, the power to provide services in support of policies that promote local housing and economic stability. It would not authorize the Gerwood Valley Service Area to levy any additional taxes if the new power is approved. That would be paid for by taxes levied under the current six mil cap. I think that's all the news that's fit to print. And then the question, should it be added to the stability? The remainder of the ordinance on the following pages, two and three, section two and section three, are amendments to the Anchorage Municipal Code that would be necessary if and only if the proposition passes. So they're sort of in the nature of cleanup. I don't know that they're of particular independent interest to folks now, but this is the current Gerwood Valley Service Area Board of Supervisors provision. You see that we would just be making the underlined additions in section two and in section three, this is what's actually defining the Gerwood Valley Service Area. And that's exactly what you would expect it to be. If the proposition passes and asks voters, should there be ability to provide services in support of promoting local housing and economic stability, then we would say that's now codified into the responsibilities of the service area and the powers of the Board of Supervisors. And that is really, yeah, I think if you go all the way to the end, the last is the perfunctory enacted clause, which is that this ordinance is effective immediately, but two and three only get codified if the proposition passes. I guess, as additional commentary to the extent it is helpful, I'll say, this one was an interesting exercise inasmuch as we have all sorts of models of powers being exercised in smaller polygons. We've got parks and recreation in Chugiat, Eagle River. We've got road service areas all over the Anchorage hillside. And then, as you guys are intimately aware, you've got roads and parks and cemetery and other things in Gerwood. No one has done this yet, which is to say, we're going to provide services that are supporting housing and economic stability. But just because it hasn't been done before, doesn't mean it can't be done. It may well raise some questions that we'll have to think through. But we know that service areas can provide services in support of voter approved functions, and so that's what we're proposing here. It does leave a lot of details to be worked out by a future Board of Supervisors somewhere down the road about exactly how that is instantiated. And there I defer mostly to Mike to, I think, describe what has been put on the drawing board so far. Hopefully, that is a helpful, quick tour of the three-page draft. And I'm also happy to stand by and answer any questions.
The other thing, the other thing I'd like to point out is on the, there's also an Assembly memorandum which goes along with this, which explains the justification for doing so. Particularly the second page of that, I think, is a, is an outline of some of the powers that would, or some of the things one could do underneath this power. There are more things one could do underneath this power, probably. But as Bill said, the exact, the very boundaries of those contours, what the edges are, has not been explored in detail. But I think the things which are listed here are, sorry, Bill.
Oh, sorry, no, I wasn't trying to interrupt. I'll go on.
I was just saying that the things, the things that are listed here are sort of, you know, fairly, I think fairly straightforward and obvious things one can do under the power. But then there are questions about, as I said earlier, that it appears that it would be analogous to the parks role for the service area. So having management authority or management responsibility for land owned by the Muni should be an option, definitely, because, you know, there would be a fund associated with this. There's, there's the ability to hold money. There's the ability to do grant applications and offer grants, et cetera. So there's a, there's a range of other things that come along with this. And then the bound, the exact boundaries of where this is, is not exactly clear yet. But everything listed here is definitely the sort of thing we'd be looking at probably, I would imagine, in the first year.
Thank you very much, Mike, and thank you, Bill, for being here and doing all this work on this document and thoroughly explaining it. Do we have any questions for Bill or Mike to start off from the board? Guy, go ahead.
Okay, this will probably be asked to me, so I want to be clear that, so we now, we taxed up to the six mil already. So this won't really increase anybody's taxes, but that 85K will be, we use some of that overflow, I guess, for our reserves for roads and parks. Is that the kind of capital?
Not quite. Although we can tax up to six, we don't tax up to six. So I think the estimate for next year is maybe 5.4, 5.3. And we won't know until April, because it depends on what the assessed value is of the, of the service area. And we don't know that until April time. So we don't know what the mil rate is yet, but it's probably in the low fives. So we could tax up to six. This doesn't give us ability to raise any more money than we can today. I guess, we have, we're not passing the budget. That's just an idea of something we could do. We would have to go through that budget process after, you know, after we get a pass or a fail on the, on the ballot proposition. And then that would go into first quarter of public propositions. That's my understanding.
At that point.
We have to do a fairly quick.
Yes.
That 0.1 mil, as we go through our budgets every year, and we, you know, watch that six, and we try to stay below it, and we work around that, that 0.1 mil will be added to our final cost, and will be added to the tax payers will support it. So we'll raise the taxes.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be.
Obviously, very, very small.
I mean, we can, we can do things like we have before. We can do things with how we balance, you know, other money coming in and, you know, capital expenditure and all these other things. So it doesn't necessarily follow that it will result in a 0.1 mil increase. There are other things changing next year as well. There's an increase in tax exemption, probably, depending if that ballot measure passes, which will increase the amount of tax exemption we have on, on our residential homes. And that will have a small impact on the, on the, on the assessed value of the valley. And then assessed values will be adjusted. And given the market this year, they probably will be going up yet again. So exactly what that number is, we don't know. We haven't passed a budget for it anyway. We can't do that until after the, you know, after we find out if the power is granted or not. And then exactly what it means in terms of dollars is not going to be clear until next April or May. But that's the kind of, the estimate is, if we did it today, it would be about $50 for a year, for an average home.
So when it says it will not levy any additional taxes, that just means it won't take us above our six mil?
Yeah, it means it's within the tax rate and power. Because we have, we only pay one, we only charge one tax, but for five services.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
So, you know, I think, just, and like I say, this budget is just something, a starting point. And, I mean, for a plan, you know, I think, looking at how plans go, they're expensive and, and, you know, we could need that, but, you know, down the road, we got the plan written. We don't, every year, we could adjust that if we don't see a need for a budget this large.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, once we get our plan under our belt and maybe we're in a, you know, you know, things are moving along and we can foresee that we don't need this, then we always revisit these budgets every year. And this could, this could change.
Yeah, that estimate is actually based on a couple of similar plans which were written in the last year. So that's a fair estimate for what a housing actual plan would cost.
Yeah, I would take the 50.
Thank you, Guy, and thank you, Mike. Amanda, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Would this power allow the GBOS or the Gerwood Valley Service Area to hold any land?
So that's probably a question for Bill's opinion. My understanding is this would not be any, the service area doesn't hold any land. The Muni owns that land. It's who manages it is the thing that matters. So under the parks power, we have, although it's held by the MOA, we have management, or the service area has management authority over the land. I believe some of the drainage areas are also held under the service area, or at least under the, under the roads or MNO operation. I don't actually quite understand the details. Kyle can probably fill us in. So by analogy, if we can, if we have management power for parkland, then I'm sure there is a very strong case to say we would have management authority for any land dedicated to housing. That's definitely an argument one would make. We definitely have the power to hold, we definitely have the power to hold funds.
Yeah, and I'll jump in to say I have a similar answer. Partly, you would crash into a real answer if and when that ever becomes really a ripe question. But I think formally, no, only the municipality of Anchorage ever owns and holds the land. But yes, the management authority for the municipal properties gets moved around all the time. So there's Chugiat, Eagle River, parks properties, there are roads that are effectively maintained and quote unquote operated by various service areas all over the place. And then, like Mike said, maybe the most helpful example is the fact that there are parks, properties now that, as I understand, are sort of controlled or managed or operated by Gerwood now. So I think the answer is, that means that yes, if there were any properties that the municipality owns, that Gerwood wanted to exercise some sort of management support for or authority for, then this would make it possible. But I would add, I think that would be a kind of a negotiation as well, because the Anchorage Assembly would have to pass an ordinance that, unlike, well, maybe I'll put a point on that and say, I'm not exactly sure if that can be done by a mayoral administration, but suffice to say, somebody in City Hall or in Lucak Library would have to agree that the management authority would transfer to Gerwood. But I think it opens up a big.
I think that, as we've discovered in Holton Hills' discussion, at the moment, there is no possibility whatsoever of any public body that represents this community from holding land. This would give us an option, at least.
Any other questions from the board? We have another question online. Brett, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So the way that I understand this is that assessing property taxes for actually no deliverable. So it, correct me if I'm wrong, but this looks to be the matter. And it seems that there's no defined outcome for the revenues generated. And it seems like it just sort of stab in the dark to guess that this budget would somehow meet an undefined goal. I'm struggling to see how this provides economic stability or anything of the nature to put it on the back of property owners. I would like to encourage the community to step back and try to understand a goal. If the goal is to provide housing for people, then this doesn't do it. This absolutely does not. I would suggest that if Gerwood wanted to have a service to provide workforce housing as a deliverable that could be contracted by a nonprofit which could get into master lease and/or hold long-term lease from city-owned property, that's a viable thing to happen, then we should be defining what the goal is, not, and not something that could be theoretically taxed to the maximum for no described outcome. This is ridiculous. I would suggest that we come up with a, an outcome that we want to see and then describe how we pay for it and deliver it. You know, I think that the impact from housing comes from the fact that there's profit to be made from short-term rentals. There's plenty of rentals in the valley. You just have to pay the short-term rates. If we expect to alleviate that with a service area, that service could be paid for by those activities that cause the most impact, such as short-term rentals. It would be better to have the short-term rentals pass on a bed tax that's executed in a local area as opposed to a broad-based property tax. And especially when we discuss, oh, it's only $50 to pay for this proposed authority, when there's no described outcome to it. I don't think this benefits anyone at all, quite frankly. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Brett. Yes, Mike?
So I think the, what you're saying is quite reasonable and quite feasible. And actually, this helps get towards that point. If there's nothing now, there's no entity that can receive the money from, you know, a change in the, in short-term rental taxes, for example. There's nothing in Gerwood that can do that. I mean, we could put it toward police. We could put it towards fire. We could put it towards cemetery or roads or parks. We couldn't put it toward housing. This gives us the ability to do that. So think of this as a, this is the foundation for pretty much any, all the ideas you asked, you suggested. And all of those ideas you suggested would need some work. I mean, I know, you know, I can come up, we all come up with ideas. There's a big, there's quite a big gap between the general idea and something which is actually implementable and has enough detail and enough justification to say, for example, what a rate should be on these different, you know, if one is talking about a short-term rental tax or short-term rental fees or whatever, what is the number associated with that? Well, I can't, I mean, I could guess one, but I don't have a strong justification for doing that. We would need some work to do that. This gives us the ability to pay an expert to do that, to do a small economic study or some other study along those lines. So this gives us the capability to do serious work on any of these policies and put it back within this framework. So I think what you're, what you're, what you're asking for is completely reasonable, but I'm not sure. I don't actually see a way of doing that of what you're asking for now within our current structure. This gives us a, like a holding location, if you like, for, for money to do the studies, do the analysis, not so much advocate for, but at least do the, you know, do the work that has to be done to justify. Not so much advocate for, but at least do the, you know, do the work that has to be done to justify something and to give a detailed justification for it. And then, then hold the money for the future. So, yeah, I mean, what I would imagine, year one is mostly, you know, setting things up. Later years, it should be running programs, but the funding for programs would not come directly from taxpayers. It would come from some other sources, that's how they're normally done. I mean, I don't know what the board will do in the future, but that is the way it normally went in other municipalities or other communities.
But, well, I'm, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike, for that explanation. But I got to say that just leaving this open-ended as an assessment of point one one on the mil rate is just non, that's just a non-starter. It's just, it's just open-ended. We should go for specific money in a grant to do that study, just as like the Girdwood Area Plan was done. But, I mean, we may differ on that, but leaving an open-ended study with no deliverable is not a viable property tax assessment type of proposal that I could see supporting at all. There's no definitive end to that at all.
A housing action plan is a specific thing, but obviously the budget itself is not what we're passing and not what we're doing tonight. We cannot set the budget for a service we don't have. That's just a, you know, a placeholder for something that would be done in the future.
Well, it's not described in your proposal. It looks like it continues on and there's no deliverable in the end. And I think that we really need to look at what the, what the end game is and how we put that money to the best use of our residents as opposed to studying the matter.
Okay, well, I think, I think your comments are all very valuable there. So maybe the right answer here is when we, when we put together a resolution or when we describe it at least, we take those ideas and, you know, here are examples of things that can be done through this power.
I appreciate all of your hard work, Mike, thank you for your answers.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Thank you both for the discussion. Bill, do you have anything to add or anyone else online?
Oh, no, I don't think I can add anything at this point.
Thank you.
We don't have a, we're obviously not going to pass anything because it's a work session. I did draft a resolution for this, but I think the right thing to do is take the feedback we'll get. You know, any feedback we're getting in this session, any feedback we get tonight. And then have something in front of us when we do the joint meeting next week.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I agree with that, with this small audience, but focused discussion, because you've worked very hard on it as well and it's pretty thorough. And with Mr. Paul's explanations too, do we need to, the purpose method, everything was on there for number one. And the feedback from tonight will appear and add to the draft, the resolution? Anything else from any board members? Okay. I will, Bill?
Having just said, having just said I had nothing else to add, I'll offer one more thought, because it sounds like the conversation is winding down a bit. And that is just to say that I think the conversation that just occurred was illuminating. And maybe it would be helpful to emphasize how I think this proposal is similar to the cemetery conversation inasmuch as when Girdwood added the cemetery power, there was a period where funds were raised for cemetery studies. And as I understand it, I think it's a sort of a period of dormancy now where there isn't a whole lot going on. And then the idea was to go for the real capital money outside of the Girdwood Valley Service Area. And then if and when a cemetery is actually constructed, the Girdwood Valley Service Area would stand ready to actually, like the parks, operate that cemetery because it has cemetery power. And then in a similar, I think that was the design conception here, that there'd be a little bit of seed funding to sort of solve the problem. So if we all recognize there is a problem and no one is really on it, studying the potential solutions could be, Girdwood's sort of forward funds some of the solutions. Additional funds then get outside of Girdwood. Then there's an ability for Girdwood to step in and provide services in a direct way, if and when all the plan kind of all comes together. So to whatever extent that's helpful, I was conceiving of the cemetery example as I was working on the draft.
Yeah, I mean, that's the exact model, it's analogous to the cemetery part. So it gives us funny, it gives us funding to start something up. The actual, you know, if we end up running, if we end up building housing, it will not be paid for directly by a tax assessments. There will be, you know, there will be some grant funding or some other sources of funding or whatever, which would come in and do that book. You know, something which actually provides the capital to do so. This gives us the ability to, you know, pay for the grant rights or whatever it might be, or someone with the right special skills, if we need that in the process.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Bill, for explaining that as well. And I feel this timing is very critical to get something within the service area so that we can address things that we couldn't in the last few years, but we hopefully can in the future that are really integral to the stability of our community and housing. We have another hand, Brett?
Right, yeah, so again, I see a lot of duplication of effort. Things that could be done by an NGO or a nonprofit. I see things that can be done that are already paid for in the Girdwood Area Plan, that are as grant money for. I see, I see that this structure would be required, as you say, to hold the taxing authority. But I see the damage being done by those who are, let's say, taking advantage of the ability to make a lot of money on short-term rentals. And I see the impact as coming from that. And I, and I would implore our community to look at ways to say, increase the bed tax and run it through this authority. But I don't think that we need to study the fact that we need workforce housing. This has been identified, studied, suggested, all sorts of things that can be laid out in the Girdwood Area Plan that already has funding. And, and if we have to just sit back and say, we need the authority to do this, but we don't want to take a tenth of a mil to do, you know, eleven mils to do it, then, you know, we should just step back and see what we're trying to solve with these eighty-five thousand dollar studies. We have been going through five to six years of failed looking at these types of things. And I don't think that throwing another eighty-five thousand dollars at it's going to solve it in the short term, Mike. So, I mean, quite literally, I think that we need to step back and look at it, what are we trying to achieve? Not necessarily spending money at deciding what we are trying to achieve. I think that we are close to being there. I think that there's public process that's coming in the gap that can identify these things. And I think quite simply, rather than putting a mil rate on it, we can just say, we may need this structure, but we may want to fund it a different way. And that's my suggestion, that we don't just start ad hoc funding this with no specific outcome. There needs to be specific deliverables because we have nothing but six years of failed deliverables in coming up with a solution. So we need to change the way that we approach these things. Thank you.
Would you like to respond or go to him?
I'll just respond very briefly. I mean, I agree with most of what you say there, Brett. The, you know, we, we know that we need workforce housing. What workforce housing means and exactly which, you know, how, what rate we do it at, what the, you know, what the, what the equivalent model is if somebody does not want to put workforce housing, is there a cost? Is there an impact fee, is there a tax, is that, how is that done? There's a lot of detail in there that we do not know. And, you know, we can guess, but it requires some actual real work and some justification to do so. So that's the, that's the kind of difference between the ideas that many of us are circulating and sort of describing and something that's actually implementable. As you know, there's a big difference between having a kind of, you know, I wouldn't say a back-of-the-envelope calculator, a back-of-the-envelope sketch. But there's a difference between having a sense of what you want the house to look like. You know, I want the living room at the front and a garage of this size, a three-bedroom. And actually having engineering drawings. The engineering drawings are what I needed for implementation. So what this or something else, and I agree, grants would be an even better way of paying for it than taxpayer funding. So if we can get grants to do that, that also works. We couldn't do housing under GBOS, we had to do it under a different nonprofit. Or we had to do the plan itself under a nonprofit model, because, you know, we do not have the power to do planning under GBOS. So if you wanted to be part of the public, a public body with public accountability, then this is really the only mechanism we can find to do that. There are other things that could be similar, but it would require creating yet a new body, not simply overlaying on the one we already have that already does local services. But, I mean, I agree with you. And I think the, what you've outlined here is the, is having a draft budget is kind of misleading. I throw it together because people have asked the questions of what would it cost? And that's just an idea. But obviously, we do not know what, we can't make that decision now. It's a decision which will come in April or May. And if we can get grant funding, we should.
Thank you, Mike. Amanda?
Thank you. And thank you both for your discussion. The Girdwood Area Plan is funded, but that funding does not include the extensive housing analysis that needs to be done to make these sorts of decisions or, you know, put in these. So, you know, well, if we have done an housing analysis, it's okay. But it's not going to go for, going to have the implementation policy that we should have this very fine detailed analysis as a, yeah, implementation policy in the area plan, but it's not, that will be done by the area. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. You cut out a little bit, but we got the gist of what you were saying in your comments, I think. Unless anyone has any questions for Amanda. Thank you, Amanda. Any other comments from the board in this? Well, if there's no other comments for the work session, I will move on. And thank everyone for your time and efforts on this important issue and attending tonight. Public comment, persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Any public comments this evening? I hear none and don't see any hands, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Thank you, Mike, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Guy. We are adjourned by forty-three.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.